This is Joseph Carrick. From Boon, I promised him that he could be as knowledgeable as he gets in whatever language he needs to speak. So please join us for the...
Congratulations. To the tribe of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Alvati. I want to begin by welcoming every single person to this town meeting. If everyone has had a chance to sign in or if you haven't had a chance to sign in, you've got your red card. I'll be saying a little bit more about this card in a second. On that table to the, well, your right, far back near where Chief Du Charvet's standing, there are additional copies of the town report, copies of the warrant only if you'd like to follow along with this meeting. There are some additional documents there. There are some limited copies of the housing warrants that we're going to be discussing later in the meeting. There are limited copies of the moderators' rules that I'll mention in a second there and other documents there that they offer to you in this court. If you want an electronic copy of moderators' rules, you can see any member of the select board in the senior's office pool back in the back hall with the large table. They can send you an electronic copy of those rules. But the most important rule is that this body can overrule any rule of the moderator or any ruling of the moderator. And Town Council will advise me as we go along when legal limits may apply to our decision making. And I'm fond of saying, this is a legislative session. Every voter who is here is a legislator for the town. And I hope that what the moderators' rules do and the way that we conduct this meeting will make you more confident and make it you feel productive in your work as legislators. When we get to warrant articles this morning, what we'll do is if it's coming up for a vote, I'll ask the question, will anyone move to open debate on an article such and such? A voter will identify themselves and say, I moved to open debate on articles such and such. And then that will be seconded. And then I will invite a member of the select board to make a short introduction so that against the legislative body has their understanding of why that article was proposed in the first We encourage free and open debate at the Hampshire Town Meeting. The way to do that is to simply line up at the microphone after the opening presentation. In a couple of instances, I have been approached by a person hoping to make a kind of a counter presentation to this select board. In one of those instances, I've extended the courtesy of allowing the person to speak from the podium so that they have some notes. Other than that, just line up behind the microphone. What I've noticed is that people are very, very respectful of one another. And normally what they do is they often don't even stand up until somebody's finished talking. What I would encourage is to form a line about five or 10 feet behind the speaker and they'll just take turns at the microphone. That will help us speed along. But that sense of courtesy and graciousness that pervades most of our town meetings, I think, is something special about this town. When you begin to speak, please state your name and address. Jeanette Gagie is taking our notes for us again this year. She needs to make a clear record stating your name and address. I'm sorry, to make a clear record of our meeting. To ask for information off the board who wants to get a little bit more information, please don't look at, say, select board member Heward. Say, Ms. Heward, how much is in line 15? Please look at me and say, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to know how much is in line 15. I would look at Ms. Heward and say, Ms. Heward, can you answer that question? And she'll respond immediately. The reason for that rule, and it's probably the least, it's the rule that makes the least common sense to us for ordinary conversation. The reason for that rule is to prevent cross-opposalsism. We have a good turnout this morning. Things are very confusing because cross-talking people have a tendency to interrupt one another by very quickly losing attention and understanding of the audience. To amend a warrant article, please put it in writing. There are forms backed with a supervisor's checklist, line forms, to help you create a written motion. All you need to do is to approach the mic, say, Mr. Moderator, I have a motion. I'll walk out and meet you and take the motion from you and read the written motion. It's important, again, to have motions in writing so that we get a clear record and so that we can be very clear with members of this body what it is that we're asking of you to do. In years past, we've conducted this ceremony set of ceremony for new town officials shortly after I read the consult or after the moderator's consults of the ballot. The select board has asked us to do it under Article 19 other matters. What I would encourage, if you are a newly elected board member or a town official, please stay. But I would also encourage, there are going to be a couple of presentations at the end of the meeting. And you're not legally obligated to stay, but if you choose to stay, I think recognizing both our outgoing town officials but also incoming town officials, these are men and women who are giving up, preparing on their personal priorities and to acknowledge their community and their betterment. So recognize them and argue with them the rest of the way. We need in four tellers this morning. I think four tellers will be enough for us. Judy Nelson, Bill Irvin, Larry Martin, and Neil Flynn. It would be three tellers. I'll talk a little bit more about voting procedures as we go. Last thing, I really hope you enjoy participating in this town meeting. It's a unique tradition. It's not a typical event in our town, but this is a remarkable chance to be directly engaged as voters in the legislative process. And so I hope that I find it enjoyable. Any questions? All right, for that, I'm beginning the...
Charlie?
Yes?
Charlie, I'm having trouble. Sometimes you're cutting in and out of my stuff. I'm trying to get the hand turned up to you.
Okay, I'll try to stay in on the mic. Thank you. I'm going to read the results of the school ballot first and then the results of the town ballot. Article 1, School District Moderator Charles Putten, 493. Joe Powett, 6. Article 2, School District Clerk Corey Jones, 461. Article 3, School District Treasurer Judy Berry, 242. Suzanne Mountain, 143. Paula Woney, 21. I find that Judy Berry is the winner of that race. Article 4, School Board, it's the top two vote hitters. Brent Rhodes, 165. Tom Coons, 293. Emily Leach, 330. Creed, Jim Jower, 2. Paul O'Leary, 2. I find that Emily Leach and Tom Coons are the winners of that race. Article 5, under SB 2 was the operating budget for the school district. 357, yes. 178, no. That article carried. Article 6, the collective bargaining cost items. 372, yes. 190, no. I find that that one carries. Article 7, roof replacement. 422, yes. 137, no. That article also carried. Article 8, to establish, I'm sorry, to raise appropriate sum for the Ralmsford School Building Improvement Capital Reserve Fund. 394, yes. 165, no. That one also carried. Article 9, to establish a regular education tuition expendable trust fund. 387, yes. 169, no. I find that that one carries. On the town ballot, select board member of the year, Denise Knowles, 441. There were 23 various write-ins. I'm not going to be reading the same particular write-ins. For Town Moderator, Charles Putten, 503. Joe Powett, 6. Supervisor of the checklist, Angela Matthews, 450. Town Clerk, Kate Desmond, 501. Town Treasurer, Vern Crozier, 327. Paul Zimlee, 176. I find that Mr. Crozier had won that race. For Chief of the Fire Department, Mark Rutherford, 468. For Budget Committee, Jody LaVoy-Carins, 240. Paul Cass, 246. Vern Crozier, 168. Edmund Jansen, 226. Dee Niecock, 203. Jonathan Boardway, 292. I find that I declared Mr. Boardway, Mr. Cass, and Ms. LaVoy-Carins are the winners of that race. For trustee of trust funds, Solomon Perry, 427. Trustee of the library, Emily Cork, 437. For trustee of the library for a different term, so a different race, Tamara Ninjapowski, 418. For trustee of the cemetery, Mark Kuchar, 492. Turning to the articles, warrant articles on the ballot. Article 2 keynote, 352, yes. 203, no. I find that I declare that Article 2 passed. Article 3, SB 2 by petition, yes. 354, no. 212, that part of it, 350, majority pass. And I find that I declare that that passed as well. By tradition, we select other town officers at town meeting. Surveyors of Wood and Lumber. There are nominees, Ed Charvet's here, Ralph Fitz, and Mark Kuchar. Are there additional nominees for those positions? For the position of fence viewer, my intention is to read all of the nominees, get additional nominees, and then call for the votes to elect those offices. For the office of fence viewer, Paul Janey Senior has been nominated under additional nominees. For tree morden, Ed Charvet here has been nominated. Are there additional nominees? And for Parks and Recreation Committee, are there any nominees? Are there nominees? The select board will fill it by, the select board will fill those positions by appointing. So this is your first chance to use your red ballot. All of those in favor of electing those persons nominated for the positions of surveyor of Wood and Lumber, fence viewer, and chief morden, please range them in. These long in terms, those opposed, I find that I declare that those persons are so elected to be in office and made this morning at the end of this town meeting. Article 5, for the operating budget. What is the legislature, the local budget on Article 5?
Mr. Moderator, Bill Irvin moved to accept.
Is there a second?
There is a second.
I just had a pencil malfunction. I'm sorry, your name?
Ms. Cleary.
Thank you. I recognize Ms. Heward of the select board to introduce this article. My intention is not to read the article in full. If anybody wishes to have me read it, please allow me.
Who is the second person?
Who's second?
The second person, I believe, Ms. Cleary.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So let me start off by saying that the select board and the budget committee are in complete agreement regarding the overall budget amounts that you see in the entire town warrant, the operating budget and the individual warrant articles. The difference is with where we would like to see the road maintenance money. The other piece of good news, can you hear me?
Can I just say something? We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
All right, I'll keep it closer to, is this good?
Yeah.
All right, I'll start again. The select board and the budget committee are in complete agreement with regard to the overall budget amounts that you see in the complete town warrant, so the operating budget and the individual warrant articles. We're in disagreement over where we would see some of the road maintenance dollars. The other item that we'd like to point out is that the tax effort represented by the entire warrant, the operating budget and the individual warrant articles, maintains a level of tax effort with regard to last, the current year, the last tax. So that means, as a matter of fact, it's probably a little bit lower. So the municipal part of the tax rate should stay the same. The other thing that's important to note is that, and I don't want this to get lost, is that the state gave us an additional $50,000 for road maintenance this year. That's had something to do with the Volkswagen settlement money that the state received, and it chose to return some of it to towns and municipalities based on the proportion that we normally get. So we normally get about $57,000, something like that, and we get an additional almost $50,000. So that's why you see a combined road maintenance budget of $325,000. It would not have been this high, and we probably will not see it this high next year either. So what is the source of the disagreement between the budget committee and the select board on where these amounts reside? The board presented a budget where all of our road maintenance was in the operating budget, and we've been signaling this for a number of years, at town meeting, at the public hearing on the budget, at our own board meetings. The board has been marching towards putting road maintenance entirely within the operating budget. The budget committee would like to see some of it as a separate warrant article, not all of it, to some of it. Not sure why the amount, because we had mentioned that the road contract this year would likely be around $300,000. The board presented the budget with the $325,000 in the operating budget. The budget committee reduced it by $250,000. The budget committee cannot create a warrant article. It's not within their statutory obligations. So they engineered the petition warrant article after the meeting, and that's sort of where we stand. Let me give you the reasons why the board would like to see it in the operating budget. But please know, please know, no matter what, we're going to have the $325,000 to spend on the road board. Whether it's all in the operating budget, or some of it's in the operating budget and some of it is in that warrant, we're going to be spending the $325,000 on the roads. I don't believe that's in question, unless you all do something really weird. So again, here are some of our reasons. The roads are an existing asset for the town. The expenses associated with maintaining these roads are recurring. They happen every single year, just like salaries, fringe benefits, supplies, equipment repair, every year. I'm going to show you a graph. I believe this was available out back. If somebody could see this, these are the budgets for road maintenance since 1991. And you can see the, the blue is the amount of road maintenance that's been in the operating budget, and the red has been the amount that's been in a town warrant, a separate warrant. And the last blue line is where the board proposed this issue, that it would all be in the operating budget. You can see that the recent boards have made a singular effort to boost the amount of money that we are spending to try to maintain roads. They're an expensive asset. We're doing the best we can, you know, without going, without, you know, having a debilitating effect on the tax rate. Dilatarius is probably a better word. As you can see, the budget's never been either all in the operating budget or all in a separate warrant. We've been spending from both, and the boards are no particularly advantaged to doing that, to having some in the warrant and some in the operating budget. And so we have, you know, our proposal was to have them all in the operating budget. And again, the $250,000 that's in the separate warrant doesn't cover what we expect to be a $300,000 road contract. We've been signaling for a number of years that we wanted to do this. The only objection that we heard from this was from some of the budget, enough of the budget committee members who chose to vote the way they did. There are no state statutes that regulate what must be in the operating budget versus what's in the warrants. That decision is left up to the select boards, and the select board made that decision and recommendation. Since 1991, there's never been a contention about accepting the road warrants. The towns have always, you know, always accepted the road warrants, which is a very good thing. We have a 10-year road plan, so what we do on our roads, we'd like to think is completely open and transparent to all of us. We update it every year. Unfortunately, we did not update it in 2017 because we were absent a road agent during a critical time, although we will be updating it in very soon, in 2018. We are using that plan. We didn't change it, so we just went forward with it. So the plan is to concentrate on our two developments, Roberts Farm and the Woodlands. So we will be completing them both over the next two years. The only other comment I would have to make is that this is not a bleeding-edge budgetary idea for towns of Farmington, Barrington, Lee budgeting this way. So for those reasons, the board would like to recommend that this body restore $250,000 to the operating budget that we would put in road maintenance. And when it comes time to address a separate road warrant article, we would then recommend we reduce that to $1. Thank you.
Debate on Article 5, we begin and try to limit the number of more comments that I make, just to be clear so that persons later on know what they're voting on. There appears to be a dispute between the select board and the budget committee, but the budget itself is what board art provides about. So you'll hear a lot about this dispute, I think, in comments, but just remember, when we come to the vote, we're talking about the entire town budget. Mr. Crozier?
May I approach, please?
May, yes.
My name is Vern Crozier. I am, was, or soon to be was, a member of the budget committee. So I was sort of involved in this process. I'd sort of like to get a sense of the body if we can do that first. First of all, is there anybody here who does not believe we need to spend tax dollars to repair and maintain the roads? Anybody? Well, I'm going to assume that that means we're in agreement. Is there anybody here who does not believe it's going to cost at least a quarter of a million dollars or more to repair and maintain the roads? I guess we're in agreement, right? Is there anyone here who believes that after we vote for a commitment to repair and maintain the roads, that it's perfectly all right to spend that money on something else? No? Okay. A little history here. The members of the budget committee asked the select board representative why money to repair the roads was in the operating budget, and we were told it allowed for flexibility and ease of accounting, despite the fact that for decades, road repair warrant articles were separate from the operating budget. About 39 years, I believe, is one fifth of the information that was given to us. The members of the budget committee then asked the board of selectmen and its representatives, would they consider a separate warrant article for this request like it had been done in the past? They declined. Since money in the operating budget, and this is a key point, can be used for anything within the operating budget. You can move stuff from one line out into another. It was conceivable our commitment today could be used for totally unrelated purposes. I'm not saying they would, but I'm saying they could. And asking the taxpayers to trust the book or the selectmen is not how municipal budgeting authorization is done. It requires specific approval to spend money and a vote and approval from this, the body. The budget committee then, by majority vote, reduced the operating budget by $250,000, which was perfectly legal and within the authority of the budget committee and under RSA 32. Because private citizens felt the roads needed attention, just like I'm sure you do, and it would be difficult for the town to move money within the operating budget to cover that $250,000. Bear in mind, the board of selectmen have the authority to move money within the operating budget. Those private citizens, including myself, initiated the warrant article, which will be Article 14 later. That action by private citizens was also legal, despite some comments that were made out there in social media Atlanta. So the issue before us is this. We believe the roads need to be repaired and they require maintenance. We don't doubt about that. We, I asked you for it, nobody said, no, I don't believe that. It will probably take $250,000 or more to accomplish that goal, and we're agreed on that. If we want to guarantee that that money that you authorize, that you will have to raise through your taxes, will be spent on roads, the best purpose to achieve that, the best method to achieve that process is through that warrant article and to not return it to the operating budget. Let's go with tradition. It's been 40 years. We've done it. This should stand or fall on its own balance as a separate warrant article. And that's all I have to say, except for we have a petition for a project.
That comes to me, what we call, okay, boy, this one, you know, okay. I'm not surprised. I'll be ready. I'm ready. Perfect. Perfect comment on Article 5. Ms. Knowles?
Denise Knowles, 501 Silver Street. I am speaking as a private citizen.
Okay, and would you, not your phone? No, I'm going to turn this down just a little bit. Where's my sound guy that I need? Yeah, go ahead and try that. And Ms. Knowles, if you'd like to turn that to face the legislative body, you may, if it's more comfortable to face the select board.
I'll quit. Promise. Did you get my address, 501 Silver Street? Thank you. I am here to propose an amendment to the budget for Article 5, to increase it back to $250,000, to restore to the budget the general municipal operations to the amount originally recommended by the select board, which would make it $2,009,860, putting $250,000 back into the operating budget.
So motion to amend Article 5 by Ms. Knowles, is there a second? And then I'll read it. A second by Ms. Alvati. To amend Article 5 by striking $1,959,860 in the first sentence and replacing that number with $2,209,860 with the purpose of restoring the budget for general municipal operations in the amount recommended by the select board. So we are in discussion on the proposed amendment to Article 5. Is there debate on that? Ms. St. Hilaire?
Kim St. Hilaire, 14, Turgeon Way. So I want to agree that everything that Mr. Crozier said was accurate. For almost 40 years, we've been funding our road resurfacing in this area, and for almost 40 years, we've had that guarantee, we've had that guarantee that those dollars are going to be spent on our roads. By putting this money back into the operating budget, not this board and not future boards...
Turn up that mic. People in the back can't hear you.
Yeah, we're having difficulty with feedback, Mr. Turgeon.
We're going to try.
Right. Let me try.
Test.
Try that.
Does that sound?
Is that better?
Is that better?
Yes.
So I'll start over. Well, maybe I don't need to start over. So Mr. Crozier was accurate. Once we put this money into the operating budget, we give up our guarantee that those dollars will be spent on our roads. This board says that they will guarantee it, and I accept that. But can we guarantee that future boards will do this? I personally voted not to keep the money in the operating budget because I want to keep that guarantee. I want to ensure that all of that $250,000 is used for road resurfacing. We give up that guarantee by putting it in the operating budget, so I will not vote for this amended budget.
for this amended budget.
Mr. Irving, and then Ms. Hewitt is asked for a minute.
Good morning. Bill Irving, 77 Rollins Road. I believe the Select Board is entrusted with the proper financial operation of the town, and they have the best ability to take care of the town finances. This group is a legislative body, but it meets once a year. If something happens during the year, this group can't easily come back together to make the changes and adjustments to properly manage the town budget. You know, there's been much said about making sure the money's used for the roads, and the Select Board knows that, that they know that's the intent, but things will happen, and I believe they need the ability, the flexibility, to manage the money and to move it if they need to, and it has to be for something catastrophic to address the issues of the town. The proper remedy for us as legislators, if they do not do that, is to boot them out of office. Not simply to handcuff them and tie their hands and say, you know, "We have to do this, and this is the only way to do it." I believe further a capital item, as this has been alleged to be, is a one-time cost. Road maintenance is recurring. It belongs in the operating system, and it belongs with the ability of the Select Board to manage that money for the purpose that we told them it's for, which is for the roads, maintenance of the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Irving. I'm going to recognize Ms. Hewitt for a brief response, and then Ms. Hanson and Lucy, I think you need to get in line.
So we've begun to trust in the Select Board. That trust, you do have trust in the Select Board, you need trust in the Select Board. Do we need to be trusted? How do you look at it? Because even though the money is in a road warrant article, we don't have to spend it, period. We had a warrant article last year for a truck for the highway department. We did not pay it. So you are trusting us to manage the funds of the town appropriately, which we hope we have been doing across the years, and we would do it and we would continue to do so. The other thing, just as a point of information, the contract for the road is likely to be executed within the next two or three weeks, which means that most of that entire money is going to be expended or tied up and cumbered very quickly. So, you know, whether it's in the operating budget or the road warrant, or really something here and something there, which is what we're trying to do. We're trying to make it more accessible, more ability to understand how much we're spending on roads every year. It's a recurring expense, like supplies, like fringe benefits, like salaries. If we put in the bill, we maintain the roads, we maintain the roads, we maintain the roads. We do it every year for many, many reasons.
Thank you. Ms. Hanson?
Lorraine Hanson, 11 Watson Lane. I think we've heard the word "trust" a few times this morning, and I think that's really the key here. It is a matter of trust. We have entrusted our Select Board to manage our county cares, and I don't think that over the years they have failed to do that. And I think that over the more recent years, they've tried very hard to try to look at everything that we need to keep our town assets at the best level possible. They've worked on 10-year plans with Stratford County Regional Planning in order to try to figure out what do we need to do to keep our roads and culverts maintained. They've been doing all sorts of things along that line over the past few years. This is really the key to keeping the town running smoothly. To handcuff them because someone is afraid that they're not going to use the money as it should be used is a very strange idea. I don't think there's any history of our town fathers and mothers not doing that appropriately over the years. I think that we have to understand there is no quote-unquote "slush fund," which I hear often. That is not a slush fund. If something arises, as has been suggested, that's catastrophic, then in that event, of course, they need to have the ability to move the money from one place to another. That would be helpful. For instance, I know the year that one of the culverts broke, they had to do some of that work. Otherwise, we're stuck with special meetings, and we're stuck with the idea of having to make additional appropriations throughout the year to manage what needs to be done. Again, it's a matter of trust, and I think we should trust our Select Board to do what's necessary.
Thank you.
Kelly Anderson, 3 Watson Lane. I just would like some clarification, if we can get it. We've heard Vern has said, you know, social media has said this is legal. I've read it's illegal. Is there anybody here that can clarify to us today that this is legal or illegal?
Is that something that Town Council is prepared to weigh in on?
Certainly.
So Mr. Attorney Baum, who is representing the town, is present at the meeting. He's not a resident of Rollinsford. My practice as moderator is to allow persons who are not Rollinsford residents, who have specialized information that may be helpful to the body, to speak before the body. Is there any objection to that? Mr. Baum?
Good morning. Can everyone hear me? My name is Kevin Baum. I'm an attorney. I work with Steve Roberts, who would typically be here if he was unable to be here today. I'm not surprised I'm up here. I expected I would be. The question is whether the procedure of the warrant article was legal. We have advised the Select Board that the process was not legal, and it was for this While citizens may petition a warrant article, in this case, as you can see from, if you look at the petition warrant article, the main proponents are, were the members of the Budget Committee. And I don't say that to call them out, but when you look at that in conjunction with taking this money away, we feel it's clearly a concerted effort or an organized effort budget. We do not believe that this was a proper procedure. Unfortunately, the remedy in that case would have been to litigation within the town, which the Select Board was understandably not eager to do. So with respect to the actual, the approach, we did not feel it was legal, and we think that the New Hampshire Supreme Court decisions support that, and if we were forced to go to court, the Select Board wouldn't prevail. Again, they chose not to do that, and so that's why we're in the position we are here today, where it is before the voters, I'm sorry, to try to rectify that. Now, to clarify, we think that if the vote is made today, that will be, you know, legal. The process to get here, we don't believe was the proper procedure, but again, the Select Board chose to avoid inertown litigation and is proposing this approach instead.
Ms. Putnam?
Lucy Putnam, 5 Slago Road. So from what I just understood from Attorney Baum, the procedure that was used to pull the money out of the warrant article and put it into a separate warrant article, sorry, pull it out of the budget and put it into a separate warrant article, was not proper procedure and could have been litigated by the town against the petitioned article. Therefore, I am, for all, many other reasons, but for that reason also am not in favor. I am in favor of restoring this money to the budget.
Thank you.
My understanding here is that there are a lot of different items in the budget, and the point has been raised that items and monies in the budget for a particular line can be moved to another line. For some reason, the road fund is different from all others. We're concerned about that being misappropriated. If we're so concerned about that being misappropriated, why aren't we concerned about all the other items in the budget that we give the Select Board the ability to deal with? And why don't we have everything on warrant articles rather than in the budget?
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Janson?
For years, I was worried about road budgets and so forth. Okay. So, as I said, for years, I was worried about road budgets. That's an interesting chart there because I'm the one that gets blamed for spending money now on roads because they said, "I don't like change." And if you look at that graph, you can see what happened when I left. It's not quite that simple, though. I don't know how we were able to keep that so level for so many years, but we did. I, as an individual, with my conservative financial philosophy, liked capital items. It's fixed, and first of all, I liked it for years as a selectman, when we went and started talking to contractors and so forth about what it's going to be. We said, "You've got to have a certain dollars for that, and it's not going to be changed" because they voted this warrant article at town meeting, and we're constrained by that. And if you want more than that, we'll go as far as we can. We'll stop when we run out of money. So that's really what happened. We were putting a certain amount of money in the budget, and we then did whatever we thought was most pressing. And of course, some things didn't get done for another year or so, I would admit, but some of this problem, though, it's not my credit for this. We like what you're talking about now for Heritage and Moses Car, which I keep bitching about because I'm a property owner on that road. And since '88, we did have a couple of emergency projects over there, but we haven't done anything for, you know, over 25 years on that road, and that's way too long to wait. And so the money you're asking for now, for this year, much of that's going to probably end up now over there. We never had to spend any money over there before, so our road budget is increasing because we have more miles of road than we were, we've lived for 25 years or so on the original constructed road, but now they face more, so it's got to go up some, I fully admit. But I always, what I'm concerned here, not just saying we want to make sure none of it's spent on the roads. We can also, though, as a town selectman, can, if the contractor comes in and says, "Well, it's just like I'm getting a house roof put on. They told me if I, we buy the shingles in the next couple of weeks, we're going to save 11% because the cost of roofing shingles are going up 11%." When you're talking to a contractor, that's the way life goes, and we're going to see more of these kinds of costs. But the, I always wanted to say, "When you come in, Mr. Contractor, you better not have a bunch of over..." "If you need more culverts or whatever, make sure you've considered all that and you've planned this project thoroughly." So I always thought that by putting it in a capital budget, it gave the selectmen some power to, stronger power to negotiate, and that's all our town officials need, all the power they can to negotiate with all these contractors. And most of this stuff that we're getting these big increases are because outside contractors are demanding more money. And so that was... In this particular case, I'm always looking at bottom line budget, though. What's bothering me this year with this budget, the selectmen have reduced the total budget compared to last year by over a million dollars, $1,095,000, whatever it is.
So, Mr. Janson, I'm going to interrupt you and find that at this time, comments on the budget as a whole are out of order because we're in debate on a proposed amendment to the budget.
Okay.
But you're welcome to return when we open general debate.
Okay, anyhow, I think that this year, since we got the legal council on one thing and another, I don't like these procedures, but it's not, the bottom line is not going to change, whichever we go with, unfortunately. Vern would say, "Well, that's academic," but so...
Thank you, Mr. Janson. Okay. Mr. Coons? So we're in debate on a proposed amendment to restore a sum of money to the town budget. Mr. Coons?
Tom Coons, 413 Stockdale. I'm in support of the amendment. I think this whole thing is just ridiculous. I don't see the logic because we had this meeting earlier on this topic, and one of the comments made earlier was, you know, "Why don't we just be putting everything into a separate warrant? If the Select Board needs to get copy paper, we should have that as warrant number 360." I mean, this is just, where do you stop? And, you know, it is a matter of trust. If we're going to elect people to offices, we should be doing so, saying, "Okay, well, this is your job. This is your authority. Just do it." I don't really think we want to be running out to schedule, you know, emergency meetings every time, you know, something goes wrong because we've taken all of the authority away from our Select Board. That's what this is about. This is nothing more than folks concerned that people aren't spending money the way it should be. It wouldn't matter if this was a dollar or $250,000. I don't see any evidence either that there has been, you know, a misappropriation of funds in the past. What brings this on? I just, this is going to become nothing more than an enormous inconvenience. Folks are going to be wondering why it is we're going to meetings every Saturday to discuss appropriations of funds. I think that we either have to elect people to positions to give them, with our trust, to give them the authority to do what we've asked them to do. And that's why I think that we need to agree with this amendment, to put the money back in the budget. You know, if there's some evidence that, again, that funds are being misappropriated by our Select Board, then this is the time where that needs to be presented. But I haven't heard a thing.
Thank you, Mr. Coons. Mr. Mead?
Robert Mead, 457 Locust Street. Robert Mead, 457 Locust Street. I keep hearing the word "misappropriated." If you give people the ability to spend the money on whatever they want, it's not misappropriated. It's bad management on our behalf. When you have money that's dedicated, and I've seen this at state, federal, and local level in cases that I've worked, both as Chairman of Force Protection Working Group and as an hygiene... and as an hygiene inspector and as an investigator, government at all level, if they get a chance, they put the money where they think it's the best deal. So, halfway through the year, something comes up, they spend the money on that. Part of what was recommended in this year's evaluation was they look at a town manager to prioritize so this stuff wasn't coming in. Warren Reagan said, "Trust but verify." And I see nothing wrong with putting this into a separate item. If people like it, great. If they don't, they hold it down. But, uh, we also got a legal opinion from a legal firm that also wasted a hundred thousand roughly of our money going to, uh, fighting that battle over the seventy-five acres, which we eventually wound up buying here. That was supposed to be a great lawsuit, and they want to do whatever. The bottom line is, lawyers all have separate opinions. That's this gentleman's opinion. The last time they gave us an opinion, it cost us about a hundred grand. I congratulate the select board for not going to court on this, but let the people vote and let's go from here. Thank you.
And I don't want to pressure anybody, but we are almost an hour in. We have a nineteen, uh, nineteen article ballot, a warrant to get through.
Caroline Kendall, Twining Silver Lane. I just want to suggest to this body that perhaps the conversation should not be around where the money should go, but perhaps process and validating a process. Because here we are in 2018, but if we validate what is perhaps not a legal process, which has been suggested or affirmed by town council, then if we are to validate an improper process, then that, that holds not just for 2018, but that holds for every year going forward. So, I would suggest that individually, we, we vote on this amendment for 2018 and how you feel about those people who are making this decision about this money, but understand also that this vote carries weight in perpetuity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kendall. I think we're about, okay. Ms. Hilaire, I'm going to recognize, and then I'll see if we're ready for the vote. Ms. Hilaire?
Ms. Hilaire, fourteen Turgeon Way. I was one of the twenty-five people who signed the petition, um, to create a separate warrant article for two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for the roads. And I'm also a budget committee member. And I, I'm actually kind of offended that I'm treated as a budget committee member, not a resident. Um, you know, people are implying that there was an organized effort by the budget committee to do this, but in fact, I was a quarter of the people that signed that petition. And if you look at some of the other petitions, um, there's obviously, for example, the town manager position, there's obviously organized efforts in a lot of these petitions, but it does not make them illegal. So, personally, I'd like to be treated like a resident and not a budget committee member. And I'm often reminded when I speak as a budget committee member that I'm not the budget committee. So, people need to think about whether or not this is really a budget committee action or twenty-five individual residents signing a petition.
Thank you, Caroline. If you were to respond, again, urge everybody at this point not to repeat arguments of the previous meeting.
I'm really, you know, I'm reluctant to say what I'm about to say only because it reinforces an issue that I would prefer not to have to, I would prefer not to deal with. But nonetheless, if you look at the videos of the budget committee meeting and also the minutes, it will reflect that it was the intent of the budget committee members to reduce the budget by two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars and then to create a petition warrant. That was the stated purpose of the budget committee members who did that. It's on video. They, they were waiving the petition. They signed it as soon as the meeting adjourned. So, budget committee member citizen, I don't know, but it was clearly seemed to me, not an attorney, but the intent of those budget committee members was to engineer what could engineer.
Move the question? Okay, so, I'm going to make a call, call a question on the proposed amendment article five. I have a request for a secret ballot, so before I summarize the, uh, summarize the proposed amendment for you and you go get your paper ballots and, and I'll talk about it, I just wanted to confirm that these five persons are present in the room. And I apologize in advance for bailing eyesight, um, in ways that I'll mispronounce people's names. So, Catherine Lam, president. Uh, B.J. Libby, thank you. Armin Turgeon, thank you. Joan Viera?
Joan Viera.
Oh, I'm sorry, Joan Viera, thank you. And June Mosher? Yes, okay, thank you. Um, so, while you have a secret ballot, the process will be to go to the supervisors, show your red card, uh, and pick up a paper ballot. Let me summarize for you what a yes means and what a no means. Uh, there is a proposed amendment. There is a proposed amendment to restore a sum of money in line that was, that was in the town budget as proposed by the board selection, approximately two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of funding a road maintenance line. A yes vote is to restore that money. A no vote is to leave the budget as a stance. Are there any questions about the amendment? I find, yes.
In restoring the money back into the initial amount, that still doesn't guarantee that the money will be used for the road, is that...
I, I think that that has been covered in the, in the debate. All right, uh, the polls are up.
Yeah.
I'm going to reopen debate on the Article 5 of the town budget. While they're counting the ballots on the amendment, I know that the amendment has everybody's attention, but I also know that there were a couple of people that encouraged to save their comments for the budget as a whole. Okay, so I think we will recess again briefly while the votes are counted and then we'll probably go to the vote on the... (inaudible) While they're counting the ballots on the amendment, I know that the amendment has everybody's attention, but I also know that there were a couple of people that encouraged to save their comments for the budget as a whole. Okay, so I think we will recess again briefly while the votes are counted and then we'll probably go to the vote on the... (inaudible) I'm going to reopen debate on the Article 5 of the town budget. While they're counting the ballots on the amendment, I know that the amendment has everybody's attention, but I also know that there were a couple of people that encouraged to save their comments for the budget as a whole. Okay, so I think we will recess again briefly while the votes are counted and then we'll probably go to the vote on the... (inaudible) I'm going to reopen debate on the Article 5 of the town budget. While they're counting the ballots on the amendment, I know that the amendment has everybody's attention, but I also know that there were a couple of people that encouraged to save their comments for the budget as a whole. Okay, so I think we will recess again briefly while the votes are counted and then we'll probably go to the vote on the... (inaudible) I'm going to reopen debate on the Article 5 of the town budget. While they're counting the ballots on the amendment, I know that the amendment has everybody's attention, but I also know that there were a couple of people that encouraged to save their comments for the budget as a whole. Okay, so I think we will recess again briefly while the votes are counted and then we'll probably go to the vote on the... (inaudible) I'm going to reopen debate on the Article 5 of the town budget. While they're counting the ballots on the amendment, I know that the amendment has everybody's attention, but I also know that there were a couple of people that encouraged to save their comments for the budget as a whole. Okay, so I think we will recess again briefly while the votes are counted and then we'll probably go to the vote on the... (inaudible) I'm going to reopen debate on the Article 5 of the town budget. While they're counting the ballots on the amendment, I know that the amendment has everybody's attention, but I also know that there were a couple of people that encouraged to save their comments for the budget as a whole. Okay, so I think we will recess again briefly while the votes are counted and then we'll probably go to the vote on the... (inaudible) I'm going to reopen debate on the Article 5 of the town budget. So, please get out your red card. If you are in favor of adopting Article 5 as amended, please raise your red card. Go ahead and put them down. If you are opposed to adopting Article 5 as amended, so it's close enough that I will ask for the tellers to do a count, please put your cards back down. And we're going to repeat the process, but this time, please leave your card up so that the tellers can count it. If you are standing in the back of the room, please help the tellers by moving to one side of the doors or the other and keeping your card up. All right, so those in favor of adopting Article 5 as amended, please raise your card and leave it up. Thank you. Please put your cards down. Those opposed to adopting Article 5 as amended, please raise your card and hold it up. Thank you. The vote, you may take your cards now, thank you. The vote on Article 5 as amended, yes, seventy-seven, no, thirty-one. I find that Article 5 as amended carries. Believe there is a motion to restrict reconsideration? Mr. Crozier has submitted a motion that the vote previously taken not be subject to reconsideration, and that's pursuant to a state statute RSA forty colon ten subdivision one. Is there a second for that motion?
Nancy Dyeom.
Nancy Dyeom? And just so I understand, it's to affect Article 5 only? Okay. Is there any discussion on a motion to restrict reconsideration on Article 5? I'm going to ask for, unless there is any debate, I don't think there will be, those in... Ms. Leopold?
Just a question, can you please explain what restrict means in this purpose?
The question is, what does it mean to restrict reconsideration? This is a legislative body. We don't follow strict Roberts rules of order anymore, but one of the choices that a body can make is at, say, at ten o'clock, they vote to approve the town budget, and at one o'clock, the people left in the hall say, hey, I have a great idea, we move to reconsider our vote on Article 5. That is permitted under our normal rules of procedure. What a motion to restrict reconsideration does is to say that later on in the meeting, we can't change our minds. Ready for vote? Those in favor of the motion to restrict reconsideration, please raise your red card. Thank you, please put them down. Those opposed to restricting reconsideration, please raise your red card. Find that the motion to restrict reconsideration carries. Yes, seventy-seven, no, thirty-one. I find that Article 5 as amended carries. Believe there is a motion to restrict reconsideration? Mr. Crozier has submitted a motion that the vote previously taken not be subject to reconsideration, and that's pursuant to a state statute RSA forty colon ten subdivision one. Is there a second for that motion?
Nancy Dyeom.
Nancy Dyeom? And just so I understand, it's to affect Article 5 only? Okay. Is there any discussion on a motion to restrict reconsideration on Article 5? I'm going to ask for, unless there is any debate, I don't think there will be, those in... Ms. Leopold?
Just a question, can you please explain what restrict means in this purpose?
The question is, what does it mean to restrict reconsideration? This is a legislative body. We don't follow strict Roberts rules of order anymore, but one of the choices that a body can make is at, say, at ten o'clock, they vote to approve the town budget, and at one o'clock, the people left in the hall say, hey, I have a great idea, we move to reconsider our vote on Article 5. That is permitted under our normal rules of procedure. What a motion to restrict reconsideration does is to say that later on in the meeting, we can't change our minds. Ready for vote? Those in favor of the motion to restrict reconsideration, please raise your red card. Thank you, please put them down. Those opposed to restricting reconsideration, please raise your red card. Find that the motion to restrict reconsideration carries. Yes, seventy-seven, no, thirty-one. I find that Article 5 as amended carries. Believe there is a motion to restrict reconsideration? Mr. Crozier has submitted a motion that the vote previously taken not be subject to reconsideration, and that's pursuant to a state statute RSA forty colon ten subdivision one. Is there a second for that motion?
Nancy Dyeom.
Nancy Dyeom? And just so I understand, it's to affect Article 5 only? Okay. Is there any discussion on a motion to restrict reconsideration on Article 5? I'm going to ask for, unless there is any debate, I don't think there will be, those in... Ms. Leopold?
Just a question, can you please explain what restrict means in this purpose?
The question is, what does it mean to restrict reconsideration? This is a legislative body. We don't follow strict Roberts rules of order anymore, but one of the choices that a body can make is at, say, at ten o'clock, they vote to approve the town budget, and at one o'clock, the people left in the hall say, hey, I have a great idea, we move to reconsider our vote on Article 5. That is permitted under our normal rules of procedure. What a motion to restrict reconsideration does is to say that later on in the meeting, we can't change our minds. Ready for vote? Those in favor of the motion to restrict reconsideration, please raise your red card. Thank you, please put them down. Those opposed to restricting reconsideration, please raise your red card. Find that the motion to restrict reconsideration carries. Mr. Crozier?
I made a motion to call Article fourteen out of order.
Okay, move forward. I hate to be a stickler for moderator's rules, but would you please write that down? So, Mr. Crozier has... (inaudible) Mr. Crozier has made a motion to take Article fourteen out of order. That is the article that was petition warrant article that relates to funding road maintenance in the town of Rollinsburg. Is there a second to the motion to take Article fourteen out of order? Mr. Dyeom is the second? Thank you, Mr. Crozier, I appreciate the courtesy. So, motion by Mr. Crozier, seconded by Mr. Dyeom to take Article fourteen out of order. Is there any question about what that would require you to do? A yes vote is, let's talk about Article fourteen now. A no vote is, leave it where it is, we'll talk about it when we get there. Those in favor of moving Article fourteen up and talking about it now, please raise your red card. Thank you, please put your cards down. Those opposed to moving up Article fourteen, please raise your red card. I find that the motion to move up consideration of Article fourteen carries. So, we are in debate on Article... Actually, we need a motion to move Article fourteen to the floor. Is there a motion to move Article fourteen to the floor?
I made a motion.
Motion by Mr. Coons and seconded by Mr. Crozier to move Article fourteen to the floor. Is there somebody who wishes to speak and introduce Article fourteen? My practice is to invite petitioners to make a presentation, as I invite the select board to make a presentation, and is not successful in finding somebody to do that. Is there somebody who wishes to speak to Article fourteen? Then Ms. Huerter.
Thank you. So, as we stated earlier, because while we were successful, thank you, in restoring the two hundred and fifty thousand back to the operating budget, the board would like to recommend to the legislative body here today that we amend this warrant article to reduce the amount to one dollar. That preserves the purpose of maintaining roads, and yet it serves to not add that to the tax base, and we recommend reducing the warrant to one dollar.
Thank you. Mr. Irving?
Bill Irving, Rollins Road, move to reduce this article to one dollar.
Motion by Mr. Irving to amend Article fourteen by striking the number two fifty... or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, excuse me, and replacing it with one dollar, perens one dollar. Is there a second? Mr. Irving's motion, Ms. Salvati, is a second to amend Article fourteen. Is there debate or discussion on amending Article fourteen? Okay, Mr. Crozier has called the question. I don't want to be premature, but I also don't see anybody standing up. So, if we're ready for a vote on Article four... on the motion to amend Article fourteen, a yes vote is to change Article fourteen from two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to one dollar. Any questions about what that means? Those in favor of the motion to amend by replacing two hundred and fifty thousand with one, please raise your red card. Please lower your cards. Those opposed to the motion to amend by substituting one dollar for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, please raise your red card. I'm able to declare and find that the motion to amend Article fourteen has passed. Renowned discussion on the warrant article number fourteen to fund improvement of roads, maintenance of roads. Seeing no discussion, I think we're ready for a vote. A yes vote is to adopt warrant article fourteen in the sum of one dollar to support the maintenance of roads in the town of Rollinsburg. Those in favor of Article fourteen, please raise your red card. Thank you. Those opposed to adopting Article fourteen as amended, please raise your red cards. And I'm able to declare on the sidelines, Article fourteen as amended passes. Renowned, Ms. Hanson?
Yes, I have a motion to restrict reconsideration of Article fourteen.
Okay. This is a motion by Ms. Hanson to restrict reconsideration of Article fourteen, as we did with Article five pursuant to RSA forty colon ten. Is there a second for that motion? Mr. Irving is the second to that motion. I think we're ready for a vote on that. Those in favor of restricting reconsideration of Article fourteen as amended, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those, please lower your cards. Those opposed to restricting reconsideration of Article fourteen as amended, please raise your card. I see, I'm able to declare the motion to restrict reconsideration passes. Article six, to purchase a service truck for the Rollinsburg Highway Department. Will anyone move this article to the floor? For discussion. Ms. Knowles has seconded by Mr. Irving. I recognize Ms. LaGuardia to introduce Article six.
Article six was presented to us through the new highway department staff, and we did not purchase the vehicle that was passed last year. Select board chose not to. This truck is a utility truck as well, and it would allow us to right-size our trucks. What that means is that some of our trucks are just too big for our county roads, so, including mine. What I'd like to do is have the highway department, if you haven't met them, George is our agent and Ed Walsh is our full-time, come up and speak about the truck itself. I believe this is a picture of an idea of what they would like and why they would like it. So, George and Ed?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. This is Ed Walsh. Anybody hear me over there? We're requesting a pickup truck because right now we have to run around with the ton and a half ton truck to do our work in town, which, when you have a load of cold pads and you have to re-equip them on top of that or on top of everything else, we are, you know, don't have the ability to carry what we need with us. We're requesting a four-wheel drive truck with a plow because in the past three years, we've had equipment breakdowns and we had to hire a truck to plow. Again, this past storm, we had that same situation. This would serve as a backup plow truck. It's not intended to be used fully for plowing every storm, just as to be, like I said, again, a backup. The truck is going to be used basically for doing our day-to-day operations. If we have to run and work, road work, we can carry our equipment with us, have our tools with us, traffic cones, et cetera, be in the truck as we need it and we won't have to run back and forth to highway garage to get our stuff. There is more than enough room in the highway garage to store this truck. Again, having the truck with the utility body to have our tools in the compartments, chainsaws, et cetera, out of the rain, and also be able to carry our compactor and everything else when we need to when we're out passing roads. I want to thank the town of Rollinsburg for letting me be your road agent and the town board of selectmen. I also personally want to thank the fire department for their assistance in the past couple storms, cutting trees up for us while we are here. Any questions on the truck?
Thank you, Mr. Gilmett.
I have one.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is ask Mr. Gilmett to step over here and go ahead and approach the mic.
Hi, my name's Ernie Offward from Farnborough Street. This warning was to come with the old truck.
Okay, so the question through the moderator is what's going to happen to the old truck?
What old truck? I mean dump truck. Oh, I thought we had one with a red, a red colored truck with Rollinsburg Highway Department written on it.
Oh, no, that's, that's a dump truck. It's this little dump truck that we've been running around to do all our work with. This is the utility trucks who can have our tools with us when we're doing all our work. If we have a load to travel to the back of the truck, you don't have to throw our tools or when we're chipping trees and stuff.
Okay.
If I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, the board is asking for 48... $84,000 or, no. $47,000 for this? So it's just 42. What happens to the 20,000 from last year? Is that just in the CIP for another use?
Okay, so a question through the moderator from Ms. Leopold to, I believe to Ms. Hewer, what will happen to a son that was appropriated in the previous year? Oh, I'm sorry, to a select board member of La Boyte-Herens. I apologize.
That's okay. We did not buy the truck last year. 20,000 stayed in CIP. And so, to withdraw the 42,000 from the capital improvement reserve fund, that is already there established for the vehicle purpose.
Is there further debate or discussion on Article 6? Hearing none, I find that we're ready for a vote. Article 6 is a proposal to purchase a service truck for the Rollinsburg Highway Department. A yes vote is, let's buy the truck. A no vote is, let's not buy the truck. Let's try it first by card. Those in favor of adopting warrant Article 6, please raise your red card. Thank you, you may lower them. Those opposed to adopting Article 6, please raise your red card. And I can put in the vote. Article 6 is adopted. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Irving. Article 7, to purchase a roadside mowing attachment for the Rollinsburg Highway Department. And again, will someone move this to the floor for discussion? Mr. Irving? To accept, is there a second?
I'll second.
Ed?
John Wood.
John Wood, thank you. I recognize Mr. Rollow of the select board to introduce Article 8.
Good morning. Happy to speak today. Yes, my pleasure to speak to Article 7. Over the years, we have subcontracted roadside mowing out on town roads to a number of people. They're all either not doing it, they're all not doing anything, actually. We found ourselves this past year not having enough money budgeted to cover the cost. After we found someone, then that person's vehicle broke down and then couldn't do it in the end. What we're proposing is that the town purchase their own mowing equipment that would attach to the log cap that we use for sidewalk maintenance and other associated work in the town. We noticed that it's $12,000. That is approximately three and a half, four years' worth of budget that we'll have for roadside mowing. So within three and a half, four years, we would have already paid for this hook in. We have a very, very capable road crew. We've met two of them. I have a few part-time assistants as well. Our new road agent has assured us that this is something that can be done in the house, which I think is very refreshing. We should all be very grateful for the level of work that Mr. Gilmet and his crew are doing for us. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Basically, just to mow the sides of the road, we would be using our own equipment instead of subcontracting out or contracting out rather than someone else. I should also mention that the money is in, would be coming directly from the CIP. That's money already in there, so it wouldn't be coming from taxation.
Questions or comments on warrant Article 7?
One question.
All right. So a yes vote on warrant Article 7 is to, yes, to raise and appropriate the sum of $12,000 to buy a mowing attachment. A no is, let's not buy the mowing attachment. We'll try it first with the cards. Those in favor of adopting warrant Article 7, please raise your card. Thank you, please lower those cards. Those opposed to adopting warrant Article 7, please raise your card. I find that warrant Article 7 passes. Thank you. Warrant Article 8, to purchase a police cruiser for the Rollinsburg Police Department. Again, a motion to move it to the floor. Mr. Irving, a second. Ms. Orway? And I recognize again, Mr. Rollow.
Yeah, I broke down the wrong name. I'm happy to speak to you. We have a cycle where we purchase new police vehicles every two years, try to keep the mileage down and the resale value higher, so when we trade it in. Happy to allow the police chief to discuss this. This is a program that's been going on our process, it's been going on for a number of years. And this is the year that we will be requesting to buy the vehicles. The money will also be coming from money that is already in the CIP fund, but will not have a direct impact on taxation. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments on warrant Article 8? I think we're ready for a vote. Those, a yes vote on warrant Article 8 is, yes, we buy the cruiser. A no vote on warrant Article 8 is, no, we don't buy a cruiser. Try it with the cards first. Those in favor of adopting warrant Article 8 to purchase a cruiser, please put your card up. Please lower your cards. Thank you. Those opposed to adopting warrant Article 8, please raise your card. And I am able to declare it, warrant Article 8 is adopted. Warrant Article 9, capital improvement reserve fund. And again, I would be looking for a motion to bring warrant Article 9 to the floor. Mr. Irving, help me out as always to keep things moving, I appreciate that. Mr. Irving, Ms. Salvati is seconding. And I recognize select board chair, Ms. Hewer.
Thank you. So this, the prior three warrant articles that you've just approved were funded by the capital improvement project plan. So they themselves will have no impact on our tax rate calculation at the end of the year. But now, now comes the warrant article where we put some money into the capital improvement project plan to keep it going. This is one of our major planning tools. We have three of them. The CIP plan for capital projects going forward 10 years. We have our spending projections, just, I guess, financial projections going forward 10 years. These are all on the website in back there. And we have a 10-year road service management plan that we use to plan out our road service expenses. So there is currently, if you have your voter's guide, if you have that with you, there is currently, I'll find it, a balance of $255,000 in the fund today. Now that's before we take out any money for the purchases that you just approved. But if you look at the net of these purchases, and there won't be any others ensuing warrant articles, it's, they're $99,000. We're asking for $178,200. So there's a net increase to the CIP balance of $80,000. So we did the good this year, and next year we'll be using, withdrawing the sum for next year's projects. Why the sum of $178,200? It's a little weird. I guess we're a slave to the numbers. And if you look at our CIP, that's the number that came out at the bottom of the column. We didn't round up, we're down, so $178,200.
Thank you, Ms. Hewer. Is there a debate or question on adopting warrant Article 9? Hearing none, we'll try this again by the card. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, please come on over to the mic.
My question is, is this misleading to the Rollinsburg people to say that all the other things that passed that are not going to come out of our taxes is really this is coming out of our taxes?
And if you, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Do identify yourself so we get a clear record.
Chris Turpin.
Thank you, Mr. Turpin. So is that a question?
Question.
Okay, a question through the board, through the moderator to the board, is this misleading? Ms. Hewer?
So, I guess it depends on how you look at it. The full $178,200 will be coming out of taxation. The, we're only taking $99,000 to fund the current project, so whether, and that money is already in the fund. It's sort of the way it works, you put money in, you take money out. So the good news is that we were able to fund $99,000 worth of projects with money that's already in there. And now we're continuing to cede that fund. It is a net increase to that fund of $80,000, as I said earlier.
Thank you. Further questions are coming on warrant Article 9. And Mr. God, I apologize for not seeing anyone speak. All right, I think we're ready to call the vote on warrant Article 9. A yes vote is to raise and appropriate $178,200 to put in the town capital improvement reserve fund. So yes means, put that money in the reserve fund. No means, don't put the money in the reserve fund. Those in favor of adopting warrant Article 9, please raise your red card. Thank you. Please lower your cards. Those opposed to adopting warrant Article 9, please raise your red card. And I find, am able to find and declare that warrant Article 9 is passed. Warrant Article 10, the culvert repair and replacement reserve fund. Again, what is our pleasure, we want to bring that to the floor for discussion. Mr. Irving? I'm just going to follow up with that now. And Ms. Leopold? I recognize Mr. Rollow.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you. Hope that I'm not trying, anyone thinks I'm misleading, but the balance of the CIP fund. But on warrant article number 10, it's a separate reserve fund. We need to think about these reserve funds as savings now for future projects. My second year on the select board, we were met with a rather expensive surprise in the middle of our year. We had a $48,000 surprise, I think it was in the end, to fix a culvert on Partridge Lane. It was more than that in the end, I think that was the first part of it, but it was a very expensive fix because we hadn't planned on it. And we learned from that, well, that board and the board moving forward, this board included, have learned from past mistakes that it might be a good idea to start planning on some of these infrastructure projects. So that's why you see the culvert replacement fund, reserve fund. There are a number of culverts in this town that need to be replaced. Now, I'm not talking about the small, little culverts like you, you may see at the end of your driveway, although we're not responsible for those, but there are other ones, like on Sligo Road, for instance, there is a small culvert that needs to be replaced, looks like a speed bump at the moment. Our highway crew can fix that themselves, which also is very good news because that didn't always happen in the past either. So Mr. Gilmet and his crew will go out and fix that. Slightly down the road on Sligo Road, there are, on either direction avenue, there's one that looks like a bridge and could be classified as a bridge, but it's a pipe. And then there's another one further up, that's a double culvert, two pipes on top of one another. They are, if you go, see that double one, is failing, or it's in the process of failing. You can see where the road is set. That will need to be replaced. By putting money aside into a savings account, we are able to draw off of that savings account, instead of coming to you and saying, we need $50,000 or whatever the magic number is to fix that culvert that year, we can say, we still need that money, but we were smart enough to put it aside, as I think we all try to do with our home accounts when we're older. And we take the money or that, or we'll be coming and saying, we need $50,000 from direct taxation. But to me, it makes a lot more sense to try to save when we can. And that's why we're suggesting that we put $10,000 into the culvert reserve fund. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments on Article 10, the warrant for the culvert reserve fund? Ms. Leopold?
Is there currently a prioritized list that the select board is working off of to determine which culverts get done?
Question through the moderator from Ms. Leopold about whether there's a list of priorities.
At the moment, there are only two that we are aware of. And they're both the ones that we, I just discussed on Sligo Road. I'm sure every resident of this town recognizes that, especially on the road view, that there may be others. And I said, there may be small ones that we can repair in-house with our very able, capable highway crew. Others, maybe not. I know that Mr. Gilmet was going to, if he hasn't already, he's been a little busy with case law students and with some story, but was going to do an assessment. And I know that we had an assessment done previously through our, the SRPC, the Strategic Planning Commission, which are the folks that helped us with our 10-year road and thing, I'll stay correct. It wasn't an assessment, it was more of an inventory. Mr. Gilmet, who I have full faith and confidence and can do an assessment of that inventory, he may find, there are things on the, that are not on the inventory that need to be added. So, this is a very long way of saying, there are only two that we're really aware of at the moment that are a major concern. They both happen to be on Sligo Road. But that's not to say that there aren't going to be others, and that's why we're trying to plan ahead.
Further debate or comment on warrant Article 10? Ms. Hewer?
Thank you. Michael, for the presentation, I do want to say, I'd like to pat all of us on the back and say that we have been, we have been working on this with, you know, the town's help. So we have fixed Partridge Lane, which was one of the expensive ones when it collapsed. And last year, we, as you recall, we had a, an authorization from you, the town, to borrow funds so that we could repair some of the other major ones that we had identified. So we have done Pine Street, we have done Willie Street, and we have repaired the storm drain in the lower mills, et cetera, at the river. So we have been working at this. And the only two remaining that are large enough to merit this are the two on Sligo Road, unless there are some that we're not aware of, yeah.
Is there further discussion on warrant Article 10? Looks like we're ready for a vote. A yes vote on warrant Article 10 is to vote in favor of placing $10,000 in that culvert repair reserve fund. A vote no means, let's not put that money in. Try it with the red cards. Those in favor of adopting warrant Article 10, please raise your card. Thank you. Please lower your cards. Those opposed to adopting warrant Article 10, please raise your red card. And I may be to find it clear, warrant Article 10 is passed. Article 11, the Conservation Land Trust Capital Reserve Fund. Mr. Irving? And Ms. Orway? I recognize select board chair, Ms. Hewer.
Thank you. So this is a perennial warrant article. We have a reserve fund that currently has a balance of, I think it's $155,000 and some change. I have to keep flipping my glasses on, but if you have the voter's guide, it does say the balance. $135,000, sorry, it's $135,558 in it today. So this is a fund that we would use with the town's approval should a conservation, piece of land that might be suitable for conservation turn up and should we, the town, want to expend some of that money in order to purchase it. So this just increases that fund by $10,000. There is, there is no impact on taxation here because we have a fund that exists... There is, there is no impact on taxation here because we have a fund that exists called a land use change tax account, and anytime a property owner takes land out of current use, there's a tax associated with that, and we put that tax into that account, it stays there, nothing happens to it unless we, the town, decide to do something with it. So this would be a decision to take 10,000 out of that account and to put it in the Conservation Land Fund, if you all approve.
Thank you. Catching up on my notes. So this is Article 11, further discussion or debate on Ward Article 11, the Conservation Land Trust Capital Reserve Fund. I think we're ready for a vote. A yes vote is to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 to put in the Conservation Land Trust Fund. A no vote is, let's not put that money in the trust fund this year. Those in favor of adopting Ward Article 11, please raise your red card. Thank you. Please lower your card. Those opposed to adopting Ward Article 11, please raise your red card. I'm able to declare that Ward Article 11 is adopted. Ward Article 12, Land Surveys and Related Expenses. Mr. Irving is stepping into the floor, and is there a second to move him to the floor? Ms. Salvati? And I recognize Select Board Chair, Ms. Stewart.
So this is a case where, should the opportunity arise to put something in conservation or to help a resident who might want to put something in conservation to do an appraisal or a survey of or alike, if, if that opportunity came up, and it hasn't come up since I've been serving on the board, but should it come up, this warrant article allows us to take $5,000 out of the fund that you just added another 10,000 to. So this is the approval, I said, we need to do in order to remove money from that reserve fund. It would be only up to $5,000, and it would only be for the purpose of funding appraisal or survey or something of the like in order to, to the end result that something perhaps would come into conservation.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Is there a debate or discussion on Ward Article 12, Land Survey and Related Expenses? Hearing none, I find that we're ready for a vote. A yes vote is to raise and appropriate the sum of $5,000 to finance land surveys and land surveys and related expenses, as further described in the article. A no vote is to not put $5,000, raise and appropriate that $5,000. If you're in favor of adopting Ward Article 12, please raise your red card. Thank you very much. Please lower your card. Those opposed to adopting Ward Article 12, please raise your red card. And I'm able to find that Ward Article 12 is adopted. Ward Article 13 relates to a house, the adoption of a housing standards ordinance. Mr. Irving? And Mr. Wardman? And I recognize Mr. Rowe.
Thank you. This, this is probably the, the one warrant article that I'm most excited about, to be honest with you. We've been working on this for quite a while now. And I think, with all fairness, we should be thanking the previous board several years ago that first started this process, but it never brought up the town meeting to actually adopt them. When he was our welfare director, whatever we're calling it at the time, health properties, I mean, they were borrowed from the city of Dover, and we applaud them for bringing them forward. We're trying to finish the process now. We have amended them slightly so they reflect more of a, of a town than a, than a city landscape. But basically, I think when you drive through our town, I think most, most of the time people will be very happy. When you come to the village, most of the time you'll be pretty happy that they have, I quote, we call it old industrial mill village. Then there are certain properties where to call the owner slumlord would be charitable, where there are rat infested apartments, where there are apartments without any heat, where they stick in a propane or kerosene heater or electric heater and call it a bedroom. We are better than that, we should be better. One is not safe, in a number of cases not sanitary. There are a number of properties where they, they just started dumps in their backyard or in their front yard in some cases. It's not just the village, there are a number of properties that would not meet those standards. You can't use your backyard as a garbage pit. It's not fair to your neighbors to have rat infestation or other vermin coming in. Currently, we don't have standards like that. There are some state statutes that can assist, but really, we need a municipal ordinance. And the town meeting, at least this year, is the only body that can do that. This is not the, Mike Rowe is going to come knocking on your doors and measure your windows ordinance. Trust me, I have no desire to do that, nor do I think any other member of the Select Board. But if a complaint is brought, especially a safety issue, we need to have tools that are disposable to hold specifically landlords, really, accountable for the condition of their properties. I would remind you also that if you live next to it, your values of your property are brought down because you live next to the garbage site. I don't think anyone wants that either. So, and I would hope, the ordinance is in the back, it's quite lengthy. I'd invite you to take a look at it if you haven't already, it's been available for quite some time now online, we have printed copies as well. But really, this is to give the Select Board some tools to empower our health officer and to save some money also, you know. There, we have, we had over the year the number of welfare cases that have caused more money because of some deficiencies in the property than it probably should have caused the town. So it could help there as well. So it's, it's a multi-pronged approach really, to try to clean up some problem areas, and I think you, I don't want to name them specifically, but I think if you drive around town, you may notice. And I hope you'll support the ordinance. I'm happy to answer any questions, but it is quite lengthy, so I hope you get a chance to take a look at it.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Questions, comments, debate on Ward Article 13? Ms. Leopold?
I just have a couple of questions regarding this one. How are complaints sent to the correct authority and the funding for it? Does the funding for enforcement and so forth have to come out of tax dollars or is it funded in some other way? And the availability of the house ordinance, will they remain online? Will paper copies be available somewhere?
Question through the moderator from Ms. Leopold regarding the complaint process, the funding authority, and whether it will remain online.
Charlie, you need to sit, not go far, Charlie, because you're going to remember all that. I'm not remembering all the questions. Okay, let's start from the last question first. Yes, there, we have been, as a board, committed to having all of the ordinances available online so folks can access them. That's something that I think we strive for, all of our ordinances, so we have an open and fair process, so people know what the rules of the game are.
Second question was funding.
Funding. We currently have a health officer that we already fund, we currently already have a building inspector that we already fund. This is just giving them the tools to complete their, the tasks that we ask them to do. I don't believe there's additional funding that would be needed.
The further question was whether the cleanup will be paid for by the town or the landlord.
Well, there are, the landlord, the town's not going to do it. I know there are, there are, there is a means, the town attorney can correct me, to, if the town had to pay some of the cleanup costs, there is a way to, to, the mechanism to, to charge the landlord, whether it's to leave, whatever, there are processes to do that. So no, this shouldn't, this isn't an additional burden on the taxpayer than anything. I think it would be helpful to taxpayers because it increases the value potentially of your property, and then you would, your property would be, would be worth more, so that brings a larger tax base, so in theory, your taxes shouldn't be going down, get it spread out more.
And the third final question was about the complaint process.
Ah, yes, so it would set up a three, four-member board that could, could assess them, the complaints, that would be a member of the Select Board, but you could still, you could still bring them to the Select Board, the complaints, but it would be made up by the building inspector, health officer, fire, you know, the public safety votes, and a member of the Select Board to determine whether or not it is a viable complaint. This is not intended to turn things into witch hunts, I mean, this is not the intention, folks. This is to, again, to give tools to the folks that you, that you make the complaint to, to empower us to actually enforce what I would call limited minimum housing standards, which is what is called.
Mr. Rowe, we're in debate on Article 13. Mr. Kellerin?
Hi, yep, that's fine. Brian Kellerin, Ross Road. I, I am also a landlord in town, as always being a homeowner, and I just want it on record that I fully support these housing standards. I've read it cover to cover, and all of my properties, meat or seed, everything in there. There are several properties around mine that don't, and they generate problems for the adjacent properties. If you've got a apartment building that doesn't have trash removal, and those people are going to find someplace to put their trash, and it's going to be maybe in their backyard, maybe in somebody else's backyard, maybe they'll find the nearest dumpster. You know, it's the same thing with, that if they've got a rat infestation in one apartment, the buildings in the village are all very close together, and that kind of thing spreads.
Thank you, Mr. Kellerin.
Thank you. You raise a great point, Brian. Thank you for, for having a landlord come forward. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that. All the complaints we've had have been from absentee landlords, and none of them have been from residents of the town, so take that word for it, but thank you for, we know we're a broad community.
I think we're ready for a vote on Ward Article 13. I don't want to be premature, but, okay. A yes vote on Ward Article 13 is to formally adopt the housing standards ordinance as proposed by the Select Board. A vote of no means let's not adopt this ordinance, but we'll do something else later. We'll try with the red cards. Those in favor of adopting Ward Article 13 related to the housing standard ordinance? Thank you. Please lower your card. Those opposed to adopting the housing standards ordinance, please raise your red card. And I'm able to declare that, as, Ward Article 13 is adopted. I'm going to jump past Ward Article 14 because that's previously been considered and I believe is subject to a motion to restrict reconsideration. So on to Ward Article 15, and this is to change our road name, and I recognize Ms. Lloyd Karen Karst.
This was voted, I believe, last, last year from Cowan Drive to Cedar Lane, but it became an issue with the safety of fire police, and so this warrant article is to change it back to Cowan Drive. It was never changed this year to Cedar Lane, and so we just have to officially make it back to Cowan Drive.
Thank you. Is there a question or comment on Ward Article 15 regarding a change in road name? Hearing none, I think we're ready for the vote. A yes vote on Ward Article 15 would change the name Cedar Lane back to Cowan Drive. So a yes vote is to do that, and a no vote is to keep the name of that road as it currently stands. Those in favor of adopting Ward Article 15 to change the road name, please raise your red card. Thank you. Please lower your red cards. Those opposed to adopting Ward Article 15, please raise your red card. And I'm able to find and declare that Ward Article 15 is adopted. Ward Article 16 is to establish a Historical Committee Expendable Trust Fund, that is by petition, and is, Mr. Irving, moves it to move to debate. Is there a second to move it to the board? And I was able to reach one of the petitioners who agreed to introduce this warrant article, I recognize Mr. Benedetto to introduce Ward Article 16.
Good morning, everyone. Chris Benedetto here, 4.6 Washington Street. I am the chairperson of the current incarnation of the Historical Committee, which we're looking to get back into action, we've already started to do that. We're really trying to expand town's appreciation for our own history. We may be a small town, but Rollins Road really has an amazing history. It has one of the best preserved mill villages in the United States. It has one of the most historical landscapes in the, in New Hampshire. And what we're really trying to do is help broaden appreciation and programming. We have the Colonel Paul Wentworth House, which does a fantastic job, but I know from being involved with them also, that that is a, really up to that organization for that structure. What we want to do is point out other historical areas of note within Rollins Road. For example, and later in April, I'm going to be doing a, a Salmon Falls Village Historical Tour led by Peter Usher, who, which will be sending out information about it. But what this article allows us to do is to maintain the funds that we raised through fundraising, like selling magnets of the new town emblem at, at events like today, Family Fun Day and similar. It will allow us to be more self-sufficient and through fundraising. Some of the other projects we'd like to do are to help organize, catalog, and properly preserve a lot of the historical documents that are at Town Hall as well. And really, this article will allow us to do some of those projects. And also, hopefully, the Historical Committee will continue on to the future, whether I'm involved or, or other people. We'd love to get many more townspeople involved in the committee, whether they serve on it or as volunteers. So I hope you'll see your way to approve this article, it will help us be more self-sufficient as an organization and use the money we raise for promoting Rollins Road's history. Thank you.
Discussion or debate on Ward Article 16? I'm sorry?
I think I'm supposed to say something before. Oh, look, the Select Board had recommended this warrant article every, well, the last couple of years now. The Historical Committee has been raising money, they've been trying to sell magnets, I know they have an idea, maybe t-shirts, that sort of thing, to, as Chris said, to raise awareness. But from an accounting point of view, they don't have an account, they can just put the money in or it just stays there. The, the Select Board would have to either encumber the funds or, you know, we'd have to keep an accounting, okay, they had, they raised $68 last year, well, it would just stay in our general fund instead of going into the special reserve fund. The Select Board also, over the last several years, has appropriated, as part of the town budget, I think it's $300, something small like that, to help to sort of cede money to help with some of these walking tours and to raise the awareness. That also would be, would be non-lapsing, so we go into this fund, so we don't have to remember, okay, well, we gave them that, now we're going to have to give them another, the town meeting, or the deliberative session, and then the voters, the next process, gave that money again. It's just a better way to do an accounting, so the money stays in a separate fund. You would also be giving the Select Board the authority to take that money out, so when people like Chris, the chair or whoever comes and says, okay, we have $310 in there, we need 200 because we want to put out a flyer, we want to buy some more t-shirts to restock, we don't have to wait a whole nother year to have a warrant. So it's just a much cleaner process. And we have, we have special reserve funds for a whole host of things, but we have to the trustees of the trust funds to, to, to watch the accounts. We hope you can support the warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. We're in major discussion on Ward Article 16. I think we're ready for a vote. A yes vote is to establish this Historical Committee Expendable Trust Fund, raise and appropriate $350 to it. A no vote means we won't create that fund. Those in favor of adopting Ward Article 16, please raise your red card. Those in favor of adopting Ward Article 16, please raise your red card. Thank you. Please lower your red card. Those opposed to adopting Ward Article 16, please raise your red card. And I'm able to finally declare that Ward Article 16 passes. Ward Article 17, to form a committee to explore adopting a town manager form of government, and I'm going to correct the procedure whatever I made on the last one, and see if Mr. Irving moves it to the floor. Is there a second to move it to the floor? And a petitioner, Ms. Hinson, has agreed to introduce this article to the legislators of this town.
Surprisingly, for somebody who supports the Select Board 100%, she'd probably be surprised that I would introduce this particular article. However, this is an article to form a town manager form of government as a possibility for Rollinsburg. It's not to form it directly, but it is for the purpose of forming a committee to determine whether it's a helpful idea for the town of Rollinsburg. As I say, I'm a firm believer and a very strong supporter of our Select Board. However, I'm looking at other towns in the state of New Hampshire have adopted other methods of dealing with their town government. Part of them have chosen either town manager or perhaps town administrative forms of government. Town manager form of government, actually, parts of the duties of the Select Board would go to the manager, and a town administrator, that would not happen. We're only asking for a committee to study this because after all, over the past several years, I don't know how, I'm sure that people on the Select Board realize, but not many of you may realize, there has been just a plethora of federal and state regulations, laws, and everything else that has to be complied with. It's becoming more and more difficult for the town to comply with the rules of the Department of Revenue Administration. They have new portals opening up, they have to do things with that. We have issues regarding assessing properties. We have issues that have to be dealt with, with making sure that human resources of the town are being properly managed, there are proper procedures and policies in place. It just goes on and on. We have the stormwater issues that we have to deal with. We have to make sure that we're complying with all federal, state, and local regulations when it comes to the transfer station, when it comes to just almost every aspect of our government. As a result of that, it seems like it might not be a bad idea to be looking at a study committee who would have hearings to try to find out from the stakeholders involved whether or not it may be a viable form to look at, perhaps a town manager, or they may find that something else is more appropriate. But I think it would be helpful to have some kind of help for our Select Board. They have a difficult time enough as it is. They spend many hours just doing the usual things that they always have done. For instance, they're doing the budget, they're doing the health and safety regulations for the town, et cetera, et cetera. So in that respect, we're hoping that perhaps looking at this as a study committee that would give a report by early, by the end of the summer, basically, to try to see if we should be looking at some other way to help our Select Board. Thank you.
We're in discussion and debate on Ward Article 17. Mr. Kellerin? Yes?
I was just wondering whether this committee is going to cost the town anything as far as money or resources?
Question to the moderator from his handsome little business committee, require money or resources?
We don't expect that to be the case.
Further discussion and debate on Ward Article 17. Are you ready for the vote? A yes vote on Ward Article 17 is to, a yes vote is to agree to reform a committee to explore adopting a town manager form of government and to, I believe, receive its report. A no vote signifies that you don't believe this committee should be established at this time. We'll try it with the red cards. Those in favor of adopting Ward Article 17, please raise your red card. Please lower your red card. Those opposed to adopting Ward Article 17, please raise your red card. Okay, so tellers, please lower your cards. And what we'll do is I'll ask the tellers to move it to place. We'll change the process here only to be exact, and I'll ask you to raise and hold up your card so that we can be sure that we cross-check our votes. Summarizing for you again, a yes vote is to form this committee, and a no vote is to not adopt, not to form this committee at this time. Those in favor of adopting Ward Article 17, please raise your red card. Please lower your cards. Those opposed to adopting Ward Article 17, please raise your red card. Ward Article, oh, sorry, please lower your cards. I think I did get that second cup of coffee. Ward Article 17 required a majority vote. Yeses were 46, noes was 32. I finally declared that Ward Article 17 is adopted. Ward Article 18, authorized sell surplus equipment and vehicles. Mr. Irving, and a second to get to the floor, Ms. Salvati. And even though this is a recurring article every year, I ask again for an introduction. I recognize Ms. Hubert.
Thank you. So yes, this is a recurring article. It gives us the power to sell surplus equipment that may come our way. So we're anticipating this year to have at least a cruiser that we would likely be selling because we purchased to move. But other things could come up. There are sometimes small matters that happen every year, so it's going to help us to sell.
Discussion on Ward Article 18. I think we're ready for the vote. A yes vote on Ward Article 18 will authorize the Select Board to sell at auction surplus equipment. A no vote means that they won't have the authority to sell. Those in favor of adopting Ward Article 18, please raise your red card. Thank you very much. Please lower your card. Those opposed to adopting Ward Article 18, please raise your red card. I finally declared that Ward Article 18 is adopted. We are now at Ward Article 19 to transact any other business that may legally come before this meeting. On Tuesday, the vote for this town made a decision to adopt a different form of government. So this is our last town meeting, at least for the foreseeable future, and Mr. Rawlins indicated a desire to make some comments for the record. I understand that there'll be grief. Some comments about what town meeting is meant, or what it means.
No one wants to go more than I, so I thought, yeah, I'll be very brief. On July 3rd of 1849, the state legislature passed a bill that carved off a section of that town's summer district and created the town of Rollinsburg. Part of the legislation that created the town of Rollinsburg authorized three man, sorry, to serve as temporary selectmen, called for a warrant, and asked the townspeople, the men, sorry, again, ladies, to bring in their ballots to elect a new board of selectmen, a town treasurer, a town clerk, and constable. So on July 28th, 1849, at the old townhouse, we had our first town meeting. That is a tradition that up until this past Tuesday, the adoption of Ward Article 3, has occurred for 169 years. And as our moderator has indicated, this is indeed the last town meeting unless the vote decided to change the system again for the town of Rollinsburg. So I think it's important that we all recognize, if some of us had family at the first one, we're all here for the last one. And we should be mindful that we will be under a new process, but we should probably never forget that this was an opportunity today to assemble and have a conversation as neighbors, that is a conversation that will not be had unless the system is changed, that there will be a new form of government that is similar, but is not the same. So I thought I would be remiss if I didn't remind us and just say thank you to 169 years worth of residents that gathered at the town hall, now the new town hall, and now the gymnasium and grade school that helped maintain this town and make it what it is today. So I think we should all give ourselves a round of applause for being here. And on a much happier note, I'd like to invite Suzanne to come up here and ask our soon-to-be-former colleague, Jody, to come here too. I'd be remiss if we didn't say thank you to Jody for the last three years of her life. For anyone that has served in this position as a Select Board member, it is not completely thankless to say thank you, but it can be frustrating. It is an enormous drain on your time, your personal time. For folks that think it's just a couple of hours on Monday night, no, it is not. It's often early morning meetings, middle of the day meetings, Saturday meetings, Sunday meetings, if they're serving on the right committee. It is a lot of time that you give up, regardless of who you are. You're going to give up a lot of your personal time. So we wanted to give this to you, Jody, and pay the recognition for your service on the Rollinsburg Select Board from 2015 to 2018, and say thank you. It has been an absolute pleasure to serve with you. We hope that you will bring the skills and the long list of deficiencies in this town to your service on the Budget Committee, so we recognize that there's a lot more than we need as the city of this town. So thank you very much.
I had a request to ask a member of the Water and Sewer District to share the information about their annual meeting. Is there somebody here who can do that? Yes, not.
Yes.
Oh, here comes Mr. St. Laire.
Yes, hi. I'm Dennis St. Laire, Rollinsburg Commission, actually Chairman. This is my last year's chairman. Anyways, our meeting's going to be at Allegiant at 6:30 on Tuesday, the 27th of March. We'll discuss our line articles and election of offices. Thank you.
Under other business, yeah. Next article of business under other business that may legally come before the meeting is to invite all newly elected town officials forward. If you'd please gather in front, gather in front of this table where the Select Board's been seated, and I'll swear. All right, this is the most fun part. Let me start by thanking all of you because you're all making a significant contribution of time and effort to this community, and I think in all instances, we're not paying you enough, so thank you for your service. I'm going to ask you to raise your hand, and then I will say aye, and I'll pause, and you're going to state your name. Everybody's going to state their own separate name, and then I think we're going to solemnly swear or affirm so that we recognize all of this, and I'm going to read some more, and then I'm going to say aye, pause, and you'll all state your own name again, and then you'll say aye do. So I do solemnly swear and affirm that I will bear faith and true allegiance to the United States of America and the state of New Hampshire, and will support the Constitution thereof. So help me God. I state your name. Do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and performs all duties incumbent on me and say the name of your position according to the best of my abilities, agreeably to the rules and regulations of this Constitution and law of the state of New Hampshire, so help me God. All right. Let's give you a round of applause. Is there any other business that may legally come before this meeting? Mr. St. Laire has asked for permission to approach Mike.
I have a question to ask. Oak Street, please, let us know what's going on. It's a vital point for the hospital. The road was closed for a couple of days. We want to know what the town is doing. Thank you.
A question to the moderator for the Select Board to inquire about the status of Oak Street.
So for many, many years, there was no definitive answer as to where the actual boundary between the town of Rollinsburg and the city of Dover lie in regard to the Oak Street. This past year, the Select Board, well, the Select Board now, they're going to do it now, have a survey done and has come to the resolution of the city of Dover that the official boundary between the city of Dover and the town of Rollinsburg actually runs directly down the middle of Oak Street. So now we know who's responsible for what. We have had, we've been operating under a temporary memorandum of understanding or operation for winter maintenance. The damage was so severe that we did in fact have to close the road down for a day and a half, two days, and has been since repaired. But we have now an actual understanding and legal document with the city of Dover as to move west out of Road 120. And we will eventually have a year-round memorandum of understanding as to maintenance long-term. Currently, we're sharing responsibility still with the city of Dover for plowing and for maintenance. Now, when the, when someone complains about the road, we have X amount of time to fix it, and we did. We were within that timeframe, so it was...
So it was a combination of new staff, a lot of storms, and just horrible wear and tear on the road. It was sort of like a perfect storm over that two-day period, where I think we all apologized that we had to close the road. But if we had to close the road, it would have been very difficult for Mr. Gillman, his crew, and the Dover side to actually fix the road and play Frogger at the same time and not get hit by a car. So we had to close for the safety of the employees, so we do apologize for that. The city of Dover apologizes as well. But long-term, we now actually have a legal document that says we now know who owns what, which we didn't have. Just that we had a gentleman agreement.
Any more business to come before this meeting? Oh, Mr. Jensen.
I'd like to congratulate the board on two things they did during the past year. One, hiring Mr. Gillman. I'm very impressed with him, he's very thoughtful, and I think that was real. Second of all, I've been worried about Oak Street for several years, and we're back to where we were years ago when we went half and half. The public work structure down there wanted to give us the whole road and stuff, and that was fighting, and I didn't have that finished. It's completely something I've been quite concerned about. The other very thing I want to comment on, yes and no. What did we accomplish at this meeting today? One thing, we reduced the budget from last year by, and this is either on page 41 or wherever in the town report, but I just want to highlight this, that we reduced the budget by a million, $95,347 today. However, and it's always a sad thing that follows, what have we done to the money that's got to be raised by taxes this coming year? Last year, we raised $800,567. This coming year, now, what we agreed on the day, according to the book, is $901,919. Otherwise, we increased the amount that we're going to, taxpayers are going to raise next year by $104,52,000. A $100,000 increase in what we're going to pay in taxes. That's what's in your report. I'm just reporting, and you may incorrect me, but that comes out to 8% increase. If you say that's not correct, that's what's in the book. It says that's to be raised by taxes.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. I'm going to recognize Ms. Hewer.
So Ed, if you look at the page in the yellow book that talks about the tax rates, you will see that the tax effort paid for by the town in the tax year of 2017 was $900,000 and something. The tax effort this year is $900,000 and something. So whatever, so that we aren't keeping things level, you will not be seeing an 8% increase in tax effort on the municipal side. You will be seeing level funded on the municipal side.
Okay, I'm going to call this part of the conversation to close and ask that Mr. Jensen and Ms. Hewer continue that conversation at another date in time. One last item of business to hopefully come before the meeting. Those of you who've managed to stay here this long, one of the provisions in the statute is for an assistant moderator, and I believe strongly that we need to train a new generation of people to take on the responsibilities of serving as town moderator. There's a fair amount of election law and governance that needs to be learned. So not to insult people who are like my age and so forth, I'd especially be interested in having a younger person, a man or woman, who's interested in this process. There's some wonderful training materials, and I'd be delighted to invite somebody into this process. So with that, I think we're ready for motion to adjourn. Okay, and those in favor of adjourned say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, thank you all very much for your